And we are now recording, so you can go ahead and start, Commissioner Olson.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the virtual meeting of the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. Today is Thursday, July 22nd, 2021. My name is Alyssa Olson, and I am the Vice President of the Planning Commission. This meeting includes the remote participation of board members and staff as authorized under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D dot zero two one, due to the declared local public health emergency. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public awareness and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call a roll to verify the quorum?
Commissioner Sweets is absent this evening. Commissioner Baxley.
Here, sorry.
Caprini. Smiley.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Marwa.
Here.
McGuire. Meyer.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
There are seven members present.
All right, we have quorum. Next, we'll proceed to the agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's legislative information management system, which is available at limbs dot Minneapolis M N dot gov. Commissioners, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Commissioner Smiley.
I move to adopt the agenda.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Marwa.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. With that, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Caprini. Smiley.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
McGuire.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Olson.
Aye.
There are eight ayes.
All right, that motion passes, and the agenda is adopted. Next on the agenda is acceptance of a minute of the regular meeting on June 17th, 2021. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes? Commissioner Smiley.
I move to accept the minutes.
Is there a second? Commissioner Ford.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Caprini. Smiley.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
McGuire.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Olson.
Aye.
There are eight ayes.
All right, that motion passes. We have two discussion items this evening. Our first item is item number four, zoning code text amended amendment for amphitheaters, and staff is Andrew.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, this zoning code text amendment is for amphitheaters. Let me pull up the PowerPoint here quickly. I don't think this is working. One sec here for me.
You're sharing your screen.
Can you see what I'm sharing?
Yeah, Andrew, we can now see your team's screen.
Oh, that's good. Just what I'm trying to share.
But I don't see the presentation.
Okay, one here. One sec here for me. Can you see that now?
We can see it, yes.
Great. So the intent of this zoning code text amendment is to allow amphitheaters as a use within the city. Currently, staff is proposing allowing amphitheaters in two zoning districts, C three A and I one. In C three A, it's proposed as a conditional use, and in I one, it's proposed as permitted as of right. There are specific development standards as well. The amphitheater shall be situated in a way as to minimize the effects of lighting and noise on surrounding properties. And second, the premises, all adjacent streets, sidewalks, et cetera, within 1,000 square feet shall be inspected after an event for the purposes of removing litter, so on and so forth. Those are pretty stock, specific development standards associated with similar uses. Finally, there's a proposed minimum lot size of one half acre in both districts. This map demonstrates the existing C three A and I one zoning in the city. Worth mentioning is the impetus for this zoning code text amendment is the Upper Harbor Terminal, where an amphitheater is proposed. That site will likely be rezoned to I one as a part of the general redevelopment. That site does not show up as it's not currently zoned C three A or I one. But again, this is a citywide zoning code text amendment, so. With that, staff has a few questions for the Commissioners. As proposed, the amphitheater use is permitted in the light industrial zoning district. Does allowing this use as of right seem appropriate? Or does this seem to warrant a conditional use permit regardless of that zoning district? I'll just go through all these questions and then take feedback. So does the half an acre minimum lot size seem appropriate? This amendment aims to regulate amphitheaters that are principal uses as opposed to small accessory amphitheaters, bandshells, et cetera. Should there be a size threshold included in this amendment to regulate amphitheaters as principal uses? And is there any other general feedback or questions?
All right, thank you, Andrew. I'm not seeing any questions or comments yet. So I'll go ahead. I I'm a little, I just don't really understand the half an acre thing. You know, I think up in the amphitheater with a principal use could be on a tenth of an acre easily. Half acre seems really big to me.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Meyer, go ahead.
Yeah, we've been requesting, like, if you demonstrate like how large existing amphitheaters are, how many acres there are for us to have context, I got. But sure, you know, indicated that half, half an acre is large. I mean, I, I think a minimum lot size would be appropriate. I think it could be somewhat smaller than, than half an acre. I wouldn't say that too much. But do you have like any images of like, is this any amphitheaters and like how, how much space they take?
Well, I guess part of what makes regulating amphitheaters more challenging is you'll have like the Harriet Bandshell that it has a pretty clearly defined stage and seating area. But if we were to look at that in terms of a, a new use, we wouldn't look at that seating area counting towards like a gross floor area because it's just seating. Whereas, like around Minnehaha Falls, there's that other little bandshell. Target Station has another amphitheater. So some of these just kind of dissipate into a park where people bring lawn chairs and it's mainly just a stage. I mean, I've, I can tell you how big approximately Harriet Bandshell is, Target Station, the one at the falls. But in terms of this use, I mean, we're mainly looking at just how big that stage is rather than as it disappears into the seating, whether that's, you know, benches that are in place or people bringing lawn chairs or standing, so on and so forth. So the Harriet Bandshell and the Target Station Amphitheater are both around 3,500 square feet of structure. The one at Minnehaha Falls is about 1,600 square feet. Again, a lot of those, though, I think, as they currently exist, are very much accessory uses to bigger things. Obviously, the Harriet Bandshell, I mean, you can look at the entire lake and say, well, yes, this is one large park and there is one amphitheater there. So in the grand scheme of how big that is at that site, it is fairly accessory. The same would apply to the Target Station Amphitheater where Target Field, Target Station, I mean, is greatly larger than the small amphitheater. So I think that that is some of that driving question about should there be a size threshold on, on what makes a, an amphitheater a principal use or an accessory use? And I will freely admit that that's a really hard number to come up with.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so, you know, I would be okay with the half acre, but I would also support a somewhat smaller lot size requirement. And then for the earlier question, I would support allowing them in light industrial districts by right. Yeah, for question three, I think that's, I think that's fine, and I don't have any additional feedback. Does that answer all of your questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you much.
All right, Commissioner Smiley.
Yeah, I was gonna say about the half acre as well, that I think it, especially with the examples that you just gave, it makes sense for it to be smaller. But I also was wondering if there was at all a thought about a maximum lot size for that? And then the other, gosh, I forgot. I had something else to say, but I'll just go with that one comment.
Sure. Yep, there are max lot sizes for both C three A and I one already, and that's going to be one acre. So really, if, if we did stick with that half an acre minimum, there are certainly some sites out there where you'd be able to establish this use without varying that lot size. But that seems like it would be limiting where these could, could be without that additional public hearing.
Okay, and I just remembered what my question was. I was gonna ask about the, if you can elaborate on what the situation is with the existing ones? Like, how are they all existing with conditional use permits, or how did they come about?
Sure. The city has a lot of flexibility on accessory uses. So yeah, like the, I know that the Target Station Amphitheater was approved as a part of, I think, the Target Station development. It was called out as an accessory use to, to that. But again, a part of this text amendment is to say, you know, what an amphitheater is and kind of define it more. So we do have a few amphitheaters in the city. I gave those three examples. It wouldn't surprise me if we had, you know, a handful of other pop-ups, bandshells, so on and so forth. That we're not really aiming to capture with this a text amendment other than still defining them and say, hey, these are amphitheaters. And some of those may be, you know, operating like with a deemed CUP if, if applicable, or we're just established accessory, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baxley.
Thanks. I'm, Andrew, I wonder, there is a precedent citywide, but what other cities? How do they treat these? I'm particularly interested in, I think I'd really support the idea that they would be conditionally used in every district. It gives you a lot of options to review these, depending on their scale, have tremendous impacts in terms of their use for adjacent properties. But had you guys, is there, what is typically done, I guess, or is it all over the place nationally?
Yeah, I mean, it is really all over the place. One thing that was pretty standard with amphitheaters being regulated in other cities was that half an acre lot size minimum. So that's why that was included in the code. Staff went back and forth on whether these should be looked at through a CUP regardless of zoning. And, and again, even staff is fairly conflicted on that, so that's why we bring that question to you.
Yeah, it's a jammy because it's still churches and things require CUPs, right? And, you know, sort of large places of gathering, it would seem appropriate that an amphitheater would fall under those kind of reviews. But I think also, as we're talking here, it just occurred to me that we, what is an amphitheater? I mean, some sort of definition, I think, would be appropriate also because you said bandshell. Well, is that really an amphitheater? No, that's a bandshell. And what, what, how do we, is it just a, is it have to have a bowl shape? Does it have to have sloped ground? I, I think some definition around what it is would seem appropriate. It's, it's, an amphitheater is so many things, so.
Right, so as currently proposed, it would read, "An outdoor venue used for music, entertainment, performances, and similar public assembly events."
Similar, okay. Yeah, that's pretty good. That would collect all of that kind of under one roof, so to speak, yeah.
Nice and vague.
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. I have a question about, I guess this particularly applies in the I one. But I'm concerned about parking. That, your language expresses a concern about light and noise and presumably affecting the, the surrounding area. But what about the issue of, you know, parking issues that would expand beyond the confines of the immediate amphitheater area? Is there any, I don't see any opportunity to examine that, or am I missing something?
Well, as proposed, we do have those parking maximums.
Yeah.
Beyond that, we would look at how impactful a use would be and if it would meet certain size thresholds that would require a TDMP. Beyond that, though, if we have vehicles parking on the city right-of-way, unless that's captured through a TUP, they're just going to be held to the same parking regs as, well, other similar uses like this. As it's proposed, it's as defined by the zoning administrator. Typically, when we have language like that, we look at similar uses and say what that parking ratio would be.
I can, I can see where you could do that under a conditional use permit, I think. But can you, I mean, if it's a, if it's a permitted use, can you look at the issue of parking in the I one district?
It is a lot easier if it is a CUP. When we have that CUP, the use would be evaluated, and one of those things that we would look at would be parking, so.
Well, I would just suggest that, you know, in the same reason, in the same way that you're looking at the light issues and the, you know, leakage of light and the noise issues, that the parking issues on the surrounding neighborhoods are also of consideration, I think.
Are you most concerned with vehicles generally parking on the street? Or would it be similar to addressing like the trash pickup within 1,000 feet of the site? Like, is there a specific development standard that we would be able to add that would maybe satisfy some of your concerns about that?
I guess I'd ask the planning department that. You know, I, I can just imagine council members getting calls and complaints about all this activity going on at the, at the amphitheater. And it's like, I can't park in front of my street anymore and those, you know, and there are people who are walking down the street and parking in my driveway, that kind of issue. It's, it seems to me that's a consideration.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marwa.
Yes, hi. I also just wanted to better understand, Andrew, again, about the lot size being a half acre. Can you help me understand, like, the Target Field one, for example, what's that in acreage? Would that be a quarter acre or so, just for comparison, or what would that kind of be?
I'd have to pull it up. If I had to guess, it would be significantly more than a half an acre.
The, just the Target Field amphitheater space itself?
Well, I guess like part of the amphitheater is like underneath Target Station, so it's kind of hard to box it in specifically. If you're looking at like just the, the stage area, not even the seating, that was that, that 3,600 square feet. So, again, that's very short of, of that half acre. But still, when you look at the rest of the seating, they've got additional green space on top. I, I would, I would bet it's closer to over an acre than less than half an acre.
Okay, and just to, just to kind of understand in those terms, this about it being a principal use versus an accessory use. If, say, you know, on some development plan or near some adjacent space, they wanted to put an amphitheater, would that always be considered an accessory use? So it would have to go into, I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, what do you mean by this is only, right? This is only for principal use amphitheaters?
Sure. It kind of gets back to not looking at small amphitheaters around Minnehaha Falls. You'll see other little pop-ups, bandshells, so on and so forth, in a majority of parks in the city. We're not really aiming to regulate those so much as, you know, big amphitheaters that may have a lot of impacts on a general area could really be disruptive in terms of noise, in terms of trash on the sidewalks, so on and so forth. So it's kind of trying to find that gray area on looking at amphitheaters, a use that can be fairly disruptive and trying to minimize those impacts to the area and also acknowledging that if you have a small little bandshell, that's probably not going to be an issue in terms of light, in terms of noise, so on and so forth. So then we would just kind of let those go as accessory. We wouldn't need to really dive in and regulate those so much as we would on a significantly larger one.
Gotcha. Okay, that, thank you. That helps clarify, because I was, I didn't want any way that this would kind of discourage those small ones that kind of pop up and are cool and organic and kind of add that, you know, neighborhood aspect to it either. So I was just trying to make sure that this language didn't preclude allowing things like that to happen still, so.
Yep, the, the intent is not to regulate those so much as, as the larger ones. So it, it's my understanding that we would consider those more accessory and just kind of leave those alone.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, then as it stands, I'm, I'm cool with the amendment.
Sounds good, thank you.
Commissioner Baxley.
And just to add on the scale for everybody, I think, you know, the half acre is about four and a half standard city lots. City lot being sort of forty by one twenty, so that's about twenty 2,000 square feet, and acres about 43,000, just sort of scaling things, about four and a half regular city lots is the minimum size you're proposing. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else have comments? I'm not seeing any more. All right, I hope you got what you needed, Andrew.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone.
All right, let's see. All right, our next item is, hold on. And our last item is item number five, a zoning code text amendment for building materials, and staff is Peter.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Going to try to share this. Are folks seeing the PDF?
Yes.
Okay. So, I can't remember who amongst you has seen this before, but this has been a long conversation or an ongoing conversation over the last four or five years to try to codify our exterior building material standards in the Site Plan Review Chapter of the zoning code. This is partly an effort from prior to the 2040 Plan adoption that has become kind of a part of implementing that plan and the code and some of the urban design guidance that was adopted in policy form as a part of the 2040 Plan to ensure high-quality building design and new development in the city. So this may be review for some of you, for some of you, it's going to be brand new. I'll try to cover some of the history in terms of the evolution of this conversation and sort of where everything came from. So as we're all aware, and this slide is already way out of date, Minneapolis has been experiencing a development boom since the mid 2000s in terms of permitting and the number of dwelling units that we've seen come through. So the city is growing, and as a result of that, city staff has taken an increased development on ensuring that that growth and development is a high-quality, attractive, and long-term addition to our built environments. Part of the reason for that development and, and in part to aid in the city's growth, the city has undergone a number of recent deregulation activities, most of which we'll be familiar with, you know, going as far back as eliminating conditional use permits for multiple family dwellings, limiting density requirements, and then, of course, adopting the 2040 Plan and most recently eliminating parking minimums. All of that is to say that we've really opened up a lot of development potential in the city and done a lot of things to reduce bureaucracy and, in many cases, costs to develop new projects in the city, particularly parking, which can be a significant added cost to a project and especially to a smaller project. So a lot of that new development, as we're well aware, has been in the form of multifamily and mixed-use development, particularly at a larger scale. We're starting to see, you know, some more nuance in that in terms of scale because we have made it easier to develop. in neighborhood interiors in certain places and along corridors that allow for smaller infill development, but we have seen a lot of larger-scale mixed-use projects in the last ten to twenty years. And in, I think it was twenty-fourteen, we adopted this guide to exterior building materials. This was an effort to address concerns about durability of certain materials and compatibility with new developments in our already-built-out city, because new development is, in almost every case, integrating with historic fabric and with, you know, existing structures and existing neighborhood character. So this was the first pass at placing limits on certain kinds of materials and evaluating their quality and their durability over time. And this is what we use today. So this is what, you know, every project that comes through our development review process and site plan review gets evaluated under, so that's a section in the staff report that you'll all be familiar with, where we do this analysis on, you know, what each elevation is composed of. A lot of that has to do with new material technologies that have been developed in the last, you know, twenty to thirty years. A lot of new facade technologies that we haven't seen in the historic built environment. That includes things like fiber cement, different kinds of metal panel, lots of new kind of rain screen technologies and products. And we've seen kind of mixed results with some of those products in terms of their durability over time. The second part of this is to kind of learn from and encourage what we see as good design and, and good exterior material expression on new projects. So understanding material composition and balance on new projects by, you know, limiting certain kinds of lower-quality materials and encouraging material placement in ways that make sense with integrating with existing context and for long-term durability, so. Concentrating durable, high-quality materials at the building base, such as masonry and stone, things that you would see in sort of historic storefront buildings and other urban contexts, and then concentrating less durable material above the ground floor and potentially recessed away from the public right-of-way. And then, you know, we looked at a lot of projects that we feel like do a good job of this. This is a project on the day of twenty-eighth that uses a lot of brick and then, you know, concentrates that along the ground floor where they have mixed commercial uses along with residential uses, concentrates it closer to the public realm where it might, you know, need to be more durable and then concentrates secondary materials on the upper levels and away from the public realm. There are certain kinds of materials, fiber cement being one of them, that we have seen issues with and that we would not want to see employed on new projects in full capacity. This is an example of an affordable project in St. Paul that does that, and I don't think is particularly successful in terms of material composition or balance and likely not in long-term durability. And then we did do some surveying of recent projects that have had issues. So in most cases, issues result as a problem with water infiltration. So certain kinds of materials are more subject to moisture and to degradation when they're exposed to moisture in a way that does not allow the facade to mitigate that moisture. Does not allow the material to breathe, dry out. And that's generally when we see, you know, massive material failures on new projects. So the top-left image here is an image of a stucco material on a smaller scale affordable project that all had to be replaced recently due to moisture infiltration. You can kind of see it sort of bubbling there on the facade. The Marshall, which is a project in Dinkytown, a huge project. Student housing mostly, all of the fiber cement had to be replaced on that project four years after construction. It was about a three-million-dollar fix due to moisture issues and installation problems. Those materials also require additional maintenance to maintain their aesthetic look at, you know, original installation. And they can be problematic to detail around when you have mechanical mechanical enclosures and mechanical penetrations infiltrating that material. This is a condominium project at Bryant and the Greenway that is currently undergoing a massive material reconstruction after failure of the stucco and fiber cement on this project. This is in the case of a condominium, you know, the, the costs are going to fall on the owners of those individual units in the form of an assessment. You'll notice that the brick and metal panel on this project is untouched. So when we have massive material failures like that, there's obviously a cost associated with that and, you know, that cost can fall differently depending on the project type that we're looking at. So in the case of market rate rentals, costs for material failures are most likely to get passed on to the renter in the form of higher monthly rents. In the case of subsidized affordable rentals, costs can be passed on to the public in the form of public subsidies. So a lot of subsidized projects seek public funds for construction in addition to funds from other nonprofit sources, and they don't maintain large cash reserves for unexpected maintenance issues and material failures. And so oftentimes, they have to come back to the city for more money when that happens. And then owner-occupied units, like the one that we just looked at, you know, private property owners are responsible for repair costs either from financial reserves or from assessments. And in the case of that project, I think it was a fifty-thousand-dollar assessment per unit in that structure. And that's a, you know, less than twenty-year-old structure. So that's some of the context and how we started looking a little bit deeper into codifying this classification system. So what were the evaluation criteria and looking at different materials? So first of all, what is the material made of? That's the easiest kind of distinction to draw between different materials. And then secondly, the application method. So how is the material attached to the building? Is that attachment method standardized by the manufacturer? So in the case of fiber cement and stucco and metal panel, a lot of those products come with a installation system that goes directly on the facade and is designed to integrate with the product such that, you know, it creates that rain screen, that sort of moisture mitigation that would ideally eliminate any issues in the future. But some of them don't. Some of them just, you know, give instructions on how to install the material and allow more freedom for the contractor or builder to do that however they see fit. And then lastly, appearance and compatibility. So what does it look like? How is it compatible with the existing building stock and how does it hold up over time with basic maintenance? So with that in mind, we've devised this classification system that attempts to divide materials into three different classes, with class one being the most durable, the most compatible and highest-quality material, and then moving down to class three, which we see as they're not compatible or more problematic in terms of its application and performance over time. And I provided you with a summary sheet I had at the meeting here that, that details how that's been laid out, and it has evolved over time. I'll go through a little bit of that more at the end here, but, you know, we've made some accommodations in terms of concerns based on cost, especially by our affordable housing colleagues and partners. But after a lot of conversations, both with internal staff in the city, our affordable housing colleagues and developers, we feel like this is a good compromise in terms of moving towards flexibility, but also ensuring that we have some level of quality control and some level of consistency in terms of what we see in new projects going forward. The second part to this is based on building type and scale, so we provide more flexibility for smaller-scale projects. And then, so there's actually a typo on the top left here. It should be three to one-hundred-and-fifty units, so anything under a hundred-and-fifty units that's subject to site plan review would be this first category, and then anything above a hundred-and-fifty would be a little bit less flexible due to its scale and impact on the built environment in the public realm. And then the highest standard for commercial, industrial, institutional projects, which typically tend to utilize higher-quality materials anyway. The other important thing to understand about this, and as commissioners who've been on the commission for a while will recognize, is the flexibility that alternative compliance provides for any site plan review standards. So site plan review being a little bit more design-focused, we have this sort of escape valve from the standards whereby we can grant alternative compliance without a variance to a proposal if we determine that it meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance and that what's being proposed is equivalent to the minimum standard that we would expect from any project. And, you know, that's a highly flexible part of the ordinance and allows us to really work with applicants when they have an alternative proposal to, you know, the sort of letter of the law in terms of the standards. So cost-conscious changes from the current regulations that we're employing today. We did hear a lot of concerns about how much we were originally proposing to limit the implementation of fiber cement. So current regulations limit most applications of fiber cement to thirty percent of any elevation. The current proposed regulations would allow up to seventy percent of those, that smaller-scale category of projects. So we feel like that adds a lot of flexibility in terms of cost concern to projects. Fiber cement being one of the most cost-effective, less expensive materials and material that gets utilized a lot when projects are seeking to keep costs down. And metal panel, which is a really broad category of exterior materials, and currently we regulate at seventy-five percent of elevation. We are proposing as a class-one material, which means you could use up to a hundred percent of it on any elevation. And we feel like that's also a increase in terms of our flexibility with the understanding that metal panels, one of the less problematic materials that we've seen in terms of implementation. So that's kind of the gist of where we've been and the current proposal. I'm happy to take any questions and clarify anything for the commission. I don't have code texts worked up yet, but I thought this was probably a better visual summary for you to understand what's being proposed. But we will have the code texts, obviously, when the formal amendment gets brought forward to public hearing.
Thank you, Peter. Commissioner Meyer, go ahead.
Thank you. Are, are we kind of doing this from scratch, or are there a lot of other cities that have done this that we can look to?
So cities usually, well, cities approach this issue in different ways, I would say. I did find some cities that have classification systems like this codified in their code. I would say it's maybe more common for design guidance like this to be housed in policy documents and design guidelines. So it, it really varies, you know, some cities, and we talked about this a little bit on Monday, but some cities, they're just, they have a lot more design policy. We don't so much, and, you know, our, our ordinance really addresses design through the site plan review chapter, which comes out of policy, but is a little bit more, you know, based on aesthetic criteria than some of the rest of the code. So we like that the site plan review chapter is codified and is really clear, but that there is flexibility built in through alternative compliance. And like, cities like Seattle have design review boards that, you know, review every project based strictly on aesthetic criteria that are developed for each neighborhood context. They would look at everything from exterior materials to, you know, scale and setbacks and plantings and things like that. We don't have that level of overview, but this is kind of our attempt to address the concerns about material expression.
Yeah, I live close to the Marshall, and it was frustrating when they had to replace their siding, like, almost right away after they built it. What, what was the material that you said it was?
Fiber cement.
Okay, and?
Fiber cement panel, I believe.
So if, if it was the use of that material that caused the problem, like, why allow it at all instead of just, and instead of like allowing like a certain percentage? I'm, I'm just trying to understand, like, how this solution addresses that problem of what we saw at the Marshall?
Yeah, I mean, so one thing that we've added in terms of language, and this has also evolved over time. So the original version of this had language that specifically addressed rain screen technologies so that we could review products to make sure that they had proper moisture mitigation being proposed. And that language got replaced with the language that you see here. All materials shall be installed to manufacturer specifications. So we have, you know, some, some ability to verify that, but really, you know, it's more about kind of just limiting the amount of material that you can use in those more problematic categories. We wanted to limit it more. We got a lot of pushback on that from the affordable housing community and honestly, from the fiber cement industry that, you know, lobbied heavily against that, because they don't believe that their product is problematic, obviously. So this is a compromise, and we feel like a generous one from our perspective, but, you know, it's kind of where we landed in terms of negotiating between different stakeholders.
So like, Councilmember Schroeder had a response to the question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Schrader.
Yeah, Councilmember Schrader dressed. And Jeremy's fine, but yeah, so a, as Peter alluded to, we've had a lot of, there's been a lot of push by the fiber cement production companies to really push more. And I, I think, you know, Peter and staff have done an amazing job of really laying out the case of why use these, why don't. As you can imagine, staff is able to give real-life examples. Hardyboard and other companies are be able to say, hey, that, we would never do that. We have a good product and we, here's our testing. I don't know if, it might have been a while back, but every time we have one of these, they do roll out a whole very long presentation for us at Planning Commission to show how we are wrong about this and should allow more and more and more fiber cement. So it's, I understand that the, the company's argument is that it won't fail. And at this, and they're saying that those were inferior products, or they can give a reason for the failures that the city's showing. Know that we have real failures that we're showing, and so trying to find some compromise, I, I think another added. difficulty is just the how materials prices have gone up. They've also gone down a little bit now, but with the prices going up, affordable housing developers want to be able to produce more housing like that. That is the bottom line, what they want to do. And that's, you know, and that's fantastic. And we need that. It's just a matter, there's just a debate. If the city wants more quality materials, we should pay for them. I think that's a very good argument. But it is something that we, we don't have added funds for these other materials. And that's kind of the balance that this is trying to get to.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm definitely one who's new to these conversations and don't have all that context. So I'll do my best to get caught up all of it. If there's, if there are any reading materials or people that the rest of us can reach out to, to, to get caught up on this that weren't already included in the staff pack. And I'd really like to like dig into this further because I think it's going to be a really important thing. Another question I had, so wood is ranked in the lowest classification. And I just wanted to understand for buildings like like the T three building, that new, new building in North Loop, like it's a taller building made completely out of wood in it. Like there are new technologies that are enabling like wood skyscrapers. And I just wouldn't want to inadvertently prevent that. And I don't know if, if the new building is like, I don't know if the T three hat building has, has any issues with it, but how would this affect something like the T three building?
So the T three building is, I believe, a timber frame construction, so it uses wood as its structural system and not as its exterior material. It's, it's pretty uncommon to see wood used on a larger scale project as an exterior cladding material. It's not unheard of, but you know, wood tends to weather, it needs to be painted or treated and generally replaced a lot.
Kind of like, is it just kind of like wood colored other material? Like I may have had a misunderstanding of like what the T three building is on the exterior because I thought it was wood on the exterior too. I might have been mistaken about that.
I don't actually know because I didn't work on that project, but.
It's, sorry to interrupt, but the exterior is core ten steel panels. They're self oxidated. Yeah, I mean, it does have a wood look to it. Richard Meyer too, but, but either way, Peter, I think described is exactly right. It's a it's a CLT or laminated timber structure clad in steel panels.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so my comments are in yours several part, you mentioned some of the way we've made things easier developed for developers. I think we should like as part of that, you should also mention the things that we've you know, the new expenses that we've had, like parking location fee, inclusionary zoning and the council yesterday. You know, proof for putting on the ballot to run stabilization measures. So I mean, that that should also be part of the conversation like we're and, and part of the like removing the parking, you know, we also passed the travel demand management plans alongside that, which increased their costs as well. It sounds like you've had a lot of conversations with the affordable housing people that are, that are balancing those out. My, my thought is is, you know, I, I would just want to, to move cautiously because we don't want to inadvertently drive costs up too much that, that not enough housing is getting built. Thank you.
All right, let's go to Commissioner Maguire.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Um, Peter, could you explain the difference? I'm sorry, I tried to Google between CMU architectural finish and a precast concrete with an architectural finish because it looked like CMU was kind of like the same thing, like a precast panel type situation. I'm not an architect, so I apologize. But I was just curious what the difference between those were. And I was also curious. So we have a limit on the number of materials, but we don't have a minimum on the number of materials and I was just curious why that came to be. And I know you were saying, you know, we want to be flexible, but I think I don't know, from my perspective, again, is like a, a layperson in the world of architecture, having multiple materials like increases interest in it and that type of thing. So is that just something that we would regulate via the site planner view as opposed to put in code? And if we do have a building that comes forward, that's all metal paneling and not very attractive. Is there a way under this regulation that we could say no to that because we just don't think it like looks very good? I guess those are my questions to start. Thanks. And again, I apologize as I am new to this and newer to the commission, so I haven't seen this before. So thank you.
Sure. Yeah. So thanks for that question. I think the first part of your question was about CMU. So that refers to concrete masonry units. So it's like a, it's like a concrete brick, basically. And you'll see these employed in a lot of different contexts, often, you know, more industrial or automotive. Used, you know, as a part of a lot of wall systems as a kind of interior part of the wall structure and sort of reinforcement method, but sometimes are used as an exterior material as well, or you know, will be used in the foundation of a building and then that foundation will be expressed on the exterior. So the distinction between architectural finish and plain finish is a little bit loose, but basically, you know, there are kind of nicer looking CMU products that are you know, burnished or polished or that have some kind of an architectural expression or treatment that aren't just plain concrete blocks. And so we've, you know, made a small distinction there in terms of that, you know, plain faced concrete and plain faced CMU can't be used on a public facing elevation because we want a sort of higher level of finish on those elevations. And then, you know, with regards to the number of materials question, that's been kind of an ongoing debate in terms of how we regulate design in the city. So you know, we sort of take the view that too many materials can be a bad thing on an exterior. And oftentimes, you know, in multifamily or mixed use projects, designers will use kind of a material collage effect to try to mask, you know, what is otherwise an uninspired building form or to give the illusion that there is, you know, some massing modulation or architectural articulation in the facade when really it's just a box and they've just kind of, you know, deployed different materials across it randomly or in some kind of pattern to try to give it more visual interest. So we try to discourage that. And that's kind of where the, the limit on number of materials came from, was an attempt to regulate that. You know, as far as single material expression buildings, I think they can be done really well if it's a high quality building or high quality material. So the T three example is, you know, all core ten steel for the most part on the exterior. And it looks really nice. It's a, it's a simple form, but it's a high quality material. It has, you know, visual interest in the sense that that material has a patina that it changes over time, you know, that it it reflects and is related to its context in terms of integrating with the warehouse districts and some of the historic building forms and materials there, but also expresses, you know, its contemporary nature. So, you know, I don't tend to think, and I don't think we as, as design review staff tend to look at single material buildings as generally bad or boring. Certainly that can be the case, especially with lower quality materials that may not weather so well over time. You know, that's, that's part of the consideration here. But you know, the commission, you know, has the ability to give its own advice. It's, it's not necessarily codified outside of that limit on the number of materials. So this would, you know, this would allow for single expression material buildings of any of those class one materials.
All right, uh, let's see. Commissioner Marwa.
Hi, Peter. Thank you for this presentation today. I was just going to agree with Chloe. It would have been great, uh, great for future for certain, all of us that are not architects to to see exactly what these kind of technical siding terms are, like if there was little photos of them or examples of them, I feel like would be helpful, you know, for those of us who are still a little newer on the commission too. Um, a piece of it that I'm struggling with, one was, oh, I had a question about the wood frame was about that timber building that was supposed to be built in the North Loop. And that was supposed to be wood framed. Wasn't that supposed to be wood on the external side also? No, that was not. I'm seeing Alyssa shake her head. No. So that was.
I think that was similar to the T three building and that it was going to be a timber frame construction. So the the wood expression would primarily be experienced from the inside of the building with exposed wood beams and not on the exterior.
Okay. What? Yeah. So one of the things that I'm kind of struggling with is with the minimum also, you know, talk about the, the number of materials or the maximum being three. And this is that, are we kind of kind of dictating that all these new buildings are going to once again kind of look the same by saying each will have thirty percent of one of these four materials? Or, you know, sixty percent of one will have, you know, you can have up to thirty percent of a different material. Like it just kind of feels like it's almost making uniformity around what all these projects are looking at, which is, I know it's kind of the the, and the, you know, the give and the get on like you wanted to have one of these four materials and have a you know, have an accent of one of these other four materials or something like that. I guess what I'm struggling with is just like, we've just seen so many very uncreative projects lately that all kind of look the same. And it's if you travel to similar cities of ours, like you're just seeing much cooler architecture happening. You're seeing people put in really neat elements. I mean, a work and creative field, I see this all over the country where architects are putting in or buildings on a corner are doing really cool, you know, vertical gardens up buildings or doing just interesting. I mean, I saw one recently in Brooklyn where they were projecting on, on the entire, so they had done one full blank facade, one wall, but on it was like constant projections. I saw a city at Tulsa had done like a whole metal wall that had different artists come up and you know, people would change it out and kind of do chalk drawings on it like once a month or once, you know, six months, we're kind of painting on it and change it. There's just elements of creativity that can be that I feel like with rules like this, we're kind of setting us up to have a little bit more of that. You get this and this and this. Does that, I mean, does that make sense? I'm just trying to figure out kind of where are we that we can encourage creativity in these projects? And looking back on that line of the comp plan that says wanting a distinctive physical environment is what we you know, the policy that's kind of leading this. Obviously, we don't want one that's in shambles and needs to be replaced either. But I guess where, like, where is that balance?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with you. I think that we could use more creativity in the built environments and particularly in housing production. You know, I think housing production tends to be kind of standardized and it tends to be highly driven by cost considerations on a per unit basis. And oftentimes, some of those more expressive or creative or unique elements of a project get eliminated. And particularly when there's really, you know, serious considerations on cost. I wouldn't think of this as a limit on creativity. So there is a lot of flexibility here. We're not telling people what to do or what not to do with this ordinance. I would think of it more as like a floor. So this is the minimum expectation in terms of quality and durability and less so specifically addressing creativity and expressiveness and design. You know, we see unique and design project, unique and well-designed projects all the time. And we, we kind of know them when we see them, right? When you see something that is a high quality project or that is unique. And that's kind of what the alternative compliance measure is all about. If, if we see a project that we really like and that it doesn't exactly meet these criteria, then, then we're able to say, you know what? This is a great project. It's a, a unique consideration and you know, we feel good about where it is in terms of our ordinance and in terms of our policies. So I don't think this limits that at all, but you know, we have to, we have to evaluate every kind of project at every scale and budget and at different parts of the city. And you know, we see a lot of different things come through that are not creative, that are, you know, only looking at the bottom line and that are not considering the long-term implications of that project's effect on the built environment. So you know, affordable housing is one thing, but a lot of for-profit developers develop their projects with a pro forma that is based on them selling it three or four or five years down the line, right? They, they lease the building up. They sell it and then, you know, they're gone. And then whatever problems occur later are the next building owners' problems or the tenants' problems. And so this is more of a kind of minimum standard than I think a limit. So I wouldn't look at those percentages as like, we want to see, you know, thirty percent brick and seventy percent, whatever. It's it's more just that we don't want to see too much of these more problematic materials that could result in long-term failures.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, yes, where in this, given that so many developers are planning just to sell their buildings and don't really kind of care about the impact of where they are today and how that, how that outlasts that. I mean, where is there elements in the, in these guidelines that there could be, you know, elements of uniqueness could be considered for bonuses or could be considered for alternate compliance or whatever it may be, I guess. Where can we make those kind of community connections come to be? So I mean, my company just developed in affordable housing project on the north side and we had an artist design all the benches out front and they're all lit up and they're all really cool. They just went up last night, these really cool kind of funky and they're all built here and Jux to help design them. I mean, we're a horrible housing developer who has a really you know, small margins and bottom lines and, and are able to do it because we, you know, want it to be something creative and it's art space. So you know, it's a little bit different, but like, we want it to be part of the community and have the community engage in it. And so I come from a lens that that's always where, you know, constantly working in new cities on that. And I feel like here we're just seeing these projects that, yeah, might get sold in a couple of years or they're trying to clearly put up the crappiest materials on the building. I guess where is there a place for that wiggle room or like that judgment call to be like, we can, you know, we will work with you if you build in a community garden or we'll work with you if you build in a I don't know. An, an interesting element to make our built distinct physical environment.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a hard question to answer. You know, design is a really difficult thing to regulate. Doesn't really lend itself to regulation because it's a, you know, creative activity and subjective and aesthetic. It doesn't really probably belong in the zoning code so much. I mean, the, the site plan review chapter is intentionally flexible because we want, we don't want to limit creativity. We don't want to limit the design community's ability to, you know, create unique solutions, unique architectural solutions. So you know, there's probably more work to be done in implementing those kinds of desires and concerns out of the 2040 plan. And it probably is going to look more like a policy document than in ordinance. You know, the city might in the future develop area specific design guidelines that call for certain public realm elements like you're talking about, like enhanced lighting or enhanced pedestrian amenities. Or that, you know, the city might create programs that are, you know, that help fund artists initiatives in collaborating with developers, but this, you know, ordinance, this specific ordinance is not that broad. It's, it's more specifically targeted at this kind of quality control effort. And I think there's probably more. And I think there's probably more work to be done in terms of, you know, creating new ways to encourage um unique and high-quality design in the city. And that, you know, that work probably needs to be done in partnership with the architectural community and with the development community on a broader basis.
Is there thoughts about um a design review board in Minneapolis? Wasn't there like past legislation that allows for one, but it was never set up or something like that?
I know that's been an ongoing conversation. I don't have the full history of that. You know, from what I know from other colleagues that work in cities that have design review boards is that they can be problematic. You know, it's it's kind of another attempt to regulate design and, you know, depending on you know, who's on those boards and, you know, their preferences, um, you know, it it can venture into shaky territory, right, where you're you're maybe reinforcing one group's preferences over another. And potentially limiting creativity by, you know, enforcing a more monotonous or a more uniform expectation on the built environment. So I I don't think that's the answer personally, but um, you know, I'm not in charge. But um, I think there is more conversation to be had around that for sure.
Thank you, Ms. Al.
All right, and from our resident architect, Commissioner Baxley.
It's a great discussion. Thank you, Peter, for um, I think, you know, the so as it occurs to me that one way to kind of get at this without, because it is a slippery slope in terms of design. You want to keep it as open as possible, but performance, and I'm thinking specifically sustainability, um, is another terrific way to talk about and to set bars. Because the issues, you know, we're talking about um typically are, yes, there's certainly material components that, but it's both installation and how it's put on a building. But sustainability could talk about um lifecycle, um, could sort of set certain standards that would allow a lot of creativity, but get at the issues I think that the city is concerned about in terms of the illustrations that you've shown around uh performance of products. So I would I would encourage the city to really delve into that and to look at whether it occurs here or another policy applications for, you know, how far could we go with setting sustainability goals, which then determine performance goals, which then align with twenty forty plan and all the things that kind of the city is doing, which would probably sponsor more creativity um than less. So I think that's a great avenue to jump in because, you know, the material things, they're always changing. You know, when we talk about fiber cement panels, you know, there's the hardy side of that. But there are some extremely high-end cement panels like Swiss Pearl, for example, which is incredibly, I mean, you've heard all this before, are are exclusive, exclusive things, and they're both incredibly sustainable products. So um, I think I I like the idea of 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 celebrating that using more. It's it's really on the design community and the developers to be creative with. I think a lot of the monotony is just is sort of market-driven. Actually, it's not. It's not for lack of creativity, but sustainability and performance standards, I think, could really drill into that in a great way. Just some other things in terms of wood, you know, I I think um that is actually coming along too. We all know the Bell Museum, you know, a lot of the big facades on that, that's a thermally modified white pine, which is incredibly high-performing, which is just a basic wood siding. So um, I think the code allows for, you know, if somebody brings an exceptional uh or a a piece of that, uh, either as a demonstration product or that keeping keeping that open. But providing incentives uh would be good. So, yeah, sustainability, I think there's an avenue there that could be really, really great. So, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. Um, just a comment first about Commissioner Marwa's questions about um design review. Uh, I can remember the discussion about possible design review committees in Minneapolis going back fifty years ago. Uh, it's been kicked around for a long time. My concern is that design review committees, in my opinion, end up being design constraint committees. Uh, and they're not, they don't result in creativity, but that's just my opinion. But I do have a question, and it kind of relates to what Commissioner Baxley was talking about. In uh, existing policy five C on your uh, in your, on page three of your document, it says ensure that exterior building materials are durable, sustainable, et cetera. And I was curious, what does the word sustainable mean in this context? Oh, and by the way, thank you for the presentation. It's excellent.
Sure, um, that's a good question, and I I agree with Commissioner Baxley that I think that there is a lot of work to do on sustainability and in building sustainability into the code. A lot of that more recently has been applied as kind of an incentive-based model to some of the bonuses that we require. For example, to exceed the maximum height requirements in certain districts or to get additional floor area ratio for our project. So I think we're starting to incorporate some more of that into the code as far as sustainable features and new buildings. You know, this effort didn't necessarily address that directly. I mean, I think that it does indirectly in that part of sustainability connects to that building lifecycle question. So um durable materials are sustainable materials because they don't have to be replaced as often, and they don't add to construction waste and to landfills when, you know, they have to be ultimately replaced and removed from a building facade. So that's part of it. But I think, you know, there's there's definitely more to be done as as far as explicating that word in our policy um and how it applies. And I think that yeah, Commissioner Baxley is right that that, I think that could be a good avenue for really integrating this kind of guidance with other concerns that the twenty forty plan addresses.
So uh, thank you. So do you see a distinction between the word durable and sustainable?
I think they're related. I mean, I think sustainable is is a broader word. It refers to, you know, performance in terms, I can refer to, you know, thermal performance, for example, in terms of how insulating a product a product is. That level of analysis in terms of evaluating those kinds of performance in materials was kind of beyond the scope of this particular effort. You know, it's it's a much more complicated project, I think, to delve into. Um, but durability is certainly a part of sustainability, in my opinion.
Yeah, I I I guess where I was headed was I couldn't see where beyond durability, where sustainability had occurred so far, but you're saying that this this requires further work, and uh, I agree with you on that. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Caprini, do you have your hand raised? Do you want to go?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, with all these different commissions and boards that I'm on and the the chain, the com- making a comment, like typing it in and raising your hand and all that's, it's like after a while, it all just, you know, folds into one another. So, yeah, I've had my hand up for a while. I apologize for not writing a comment. So um, four buildings, uh, Lowry and Emerson. The building on Lowry, I think, is on the south side of Lowry. And then there's um, the Crescent. I believe that's on Broadway, and I believe it's on the north side of West Broadway. And then there's um, the building, the two buildings on uh Golden Valley Road uh across the street from one another. And then I'm gonna put a pin in that and uh bring up the new development that's coming, that's being uh built right now on West Broadway. So my question is, the building that's on Lowry and the building that's on West Broadway are very similar in the materials that were used. And uh, and it's um, and just its style, I don't sure if it's the same developer. But there's, they're very similar in style. Um, where those materials fit in these classifications, I don't know. Um, I could probably guess and and be wrong. So I guess my concern or question is, where would the buildings on Golden Valley Road in regards to materials not in this part of the question in terms of of design, just materials, where would they fit in in these classifications? Do you know which buildings I'm talking about?
I don't think I do.
Buildings, they're, uh, they look kind of like something out of Dick Tracy. They're very um bright and colorful. They're, I think, one's green, one's orange. And um aesthetically, to me, they look cheap. But I don't know, maybe the materials are very durable. I guess I asked the question because when earlier in the conversation, there was um, I was driving hands-free, listening to the meeting, and there was a conversation surrounding affordable housing and the discussion that uh, that community is having in regards to um materials. And my assumption, and correct me if I'm wrong, was the concern about buildings not being uh, buildings uh, ending up with materials that aren't um pleasing to the eye or um are not as durable or sustainable because of the uh cost of materials and the um, the desire to um to ensure that the bottom line is taken care of, and then we're also keeping um the units affordable, which I completely understand. I I'm not naive to you know, what the goal is for someone who wants to uh build something in the city of Minneapolis, depending on where it is. So so I guess, I don't know if you can answer that question now. I don't know if you can, telling me which classifications those buildings would actually fall into. It's, I guess, I have a a concern that the affordable housing community is sharing. My concern would be the building that's on West Broadway because it's being developed now where it falls within these classifications because it's obviously too late to um consider whether or not the materials are going to be um durable or sustainable or even attractive, for that matter. The design might just be brilliant, but when it comes to, you know, the the colors that are chosen, it's just, they could have been brown. You know, it could have been something that, I don't know, just looked less like something that Dick Tracy was gonna walk on. I I can't get that out of my mind. I'm sorry. I grew up in that era and I loved Dick Tracy, but I don't want to drive down the street and see a whole monolithic oh, this is awesome. See, look at that. That's that to me, I I like that. I do like it.
So this is, yeah, I think you were referring to this. Maybe this is the Hawthorne Eco Village on Lowry.
Exactly, yeah. That that building is, I I do really appreciate, even though still, again, um, I, at first I was taken a little back because of the colors. Because it's just something that happens on the north side so much, and I've come to the conclusion that it's probably because it costs less. But but design-wise, it it's a lot more pleasing than, in my opinion, than the one that's on Golden Valley. It, that to me reminds me of the projects. And not to be, uh, this, I lived in the projects. I grew up there. I lived there for a minute as a baby. So not meaning any disrespect to that, but but that's what it reminds me of.
I think I know, I think I understand what you're what you're getting at and.
Where would they fit?
So I don't know about those Golden Valley projects because I I don't know what you're referring to, but this project, which I think is a really nice project, I would agree. Um, I think this would absolutely fit under the proposal. It it fits under the current standards that we use. So, you know, the balance of brick and in this case, what I believe is a fiber cement product, it's it's either a Neat Chihah fiber cement, which is a higher-quality fiber cement product um or a hardy board. I think it's Neat Chihah, though. And um.
The other is, oh, go ahead. You go ahead.
Oh, so yeah, this project, which is a very sustainable project, and I think an attractive project would absolutely be encouraged and allowed under the the proposal. Um, you know, I think one issue that you're bringing up is is a distinction between affordable projects and market rate projects. Our effort is to not have a distinction between those, to, you know, part of the effort of this ordinance is to and to have standards across all development that are equitable and that create equitable outcomes, regardless of whether a project is subsidized affordable or market rate. You know, that affordable project should also be high-quality and durable, should also last um over time and create a you know, a valuable addition to the built environment, and that there should really be no visual distinction between affordable housing and market rate housing. And so that's why we don't make a distinction in the in the classification for, you know, those two types of housing. But we're trying to incorporate some level of of cost consciousness so that we aren't escalating costs for specifically affordable projects that can be, you know, very challenged in terms of finding funding to make them happen.
And and I appreciate that, and and I really appreciate you bringing up this building because I don't know if anyone else on the commission has actually seen it before. It is a very uh, it's very well done. I I appreciate it. I I wish you could bring up the one on Golden Valley Road and Penn Avenue, but I don't want you to for the for the sake of time. Perhaps you could look at it another day.
Sure.
But but I would be curious to know where that that those two buildings fit in in the classifications. And then the last thing I wanted to say is I do recall a conversation um with the commission prior to the new members about the uh conversations swirling around um the building on West Broadway where uh the Broadway Liquor Store is and how difficult it was getting it to look um as as nice as it does, because there was this back and forth about, obviously, materials and money and blah, 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 all those things. So um, that building stands out. That does say anchor to me and, you know, and I I I do believe that there are are, there has to be materials that can be found that work within this, these parameters that are not um just bright green or bright red and that's it. You know, it's just a green segment and then another green segment and just using those colors because those are the ones in front of me right now. So even though you can't tell me what classifications those other buildings fall in, um, I've appreciated this conversation very much because as again, I I keep continually keep learning more and more and more, which excites me, and the presentation was awesome. And uh, all of the comments from the commissioners have have really been super helpful. And and Peter, you've you inspire me every time you present something to dig a little deeper and actually go to the buildings that we're talking about and even touch them sometimes to feel what the materials look like or just see the space. So I appreciate you. Thanks.
Sure, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Meyer.
Yeah, I think that type of thing that maybe we just went through is is helpful. And it it would be helpful to me um to have some more side-by-side images of, okay, so here's a building that that we didn't like, that would not be allowed under um the the new ordinances and like, I don't, I don't know if it's possible to say like, this is what it would look like instead after the ordinance, and I I I agree with Commissioner Marwa that we don't want to inadvertently cause the kind of design problems that we've seen elsewhere. And then I I was just gonna come into Commissioner Baxley, like, did you say that you you just assumed that? We've all seen the exterior of the Bell Museum. I mean, I've been by the Bell Museum, but I never looked, never really paid attention to like the material, I guess, and um never heard of of Swiss Pearl before. Uh, so um like, don't, don't assume we know any of that. Um, I would like to. I think uh like, like I said at the beginning, um, if there, if there are any materials that I can read, oh, do we like that or not like that? I don't know.
It's a cool building.
And 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 does, would this proposal affect it positively or negatively or not at all? And, and, and does, would this proposal affect it positively or negatively or not at all?
So this building would require alternative compliance under the current ordinance, because wood is a class three material. But, you know, as Commissioner Baxley alluded to, it's a treated product. It's a, it's a high-quality product. It's, you know, a unique application. And so that's, that's what that measure in the site plan review ordinance is for, is to allow for this kind of unique solution on a particularly expressive and interesting building. And so we would, I mean, I think be okay with this probably, once we learn more about it, you know.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's good to know that you got that. And so like, as I mentioned in the beginning, like, when, when you were having these discussions with affordable housing advocates, like, did they, did they submit any documents that we can read? Like, can that be added to the public record for us to, to go through? Or was it all just conversations?
It was mostly conversations and back and forth, and, you know, looking at, you know, challenges that certain projects are happening or having and certain, you know, cost implications of, you know, different iterations of the classification. And so I don't know if there's anything that I can point you to directly, but.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Baxley.
Yeah, thanks. All right. And thanks, Commissioner Meyer, for reminding me about terms and, and things that I use all the time that may not be familiar to everybody. So thank you very much. Maybe another, you know, as we, I think is, you know, because design is subjective. And, you know, so many may look at the Bell Museum and wonder what the heck that is. And so I think, again, it just brings up the issue. It's really hard to regulate that. But focusing on performance and sustainability, which we all need, is a good way to get it. Another project for the commissioners, if they're maybe aware, it's worth going to visit, is The Rose, which is on Franklin and.
Portland.
Portland, is it on the corner, which is affordable housing project that was built under the Living Building Challenge, which is, you may have heard of LEED. It's a performance rating system for sustainability. And the Living Building Challenge is an even more stringent one than that. And I think so, it's an interesting layering of understanding to meet that requirements you have to. And so some people might find this building completely ugly and some might find it quite beautiful. But it's, it's highly sustainable. It's a really remarkable housing project for anybody, affordable or not, would be. So one worth visiting and looking, I think it's a combination of metal panel and fiber cement, as well as some brick on the bottom. There's some just, but an interesting project that challenges, I think, a lot of our aesthetic assumptions and what's possible in terms of performance for typology that typically doesn't get that attention. So, thank you.
And I would maybe just point out that this project at this scale would likely be approvable under the current proposal. There wouldn't be any limits.
All right, Commissioner Marwa.
Uh, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Meyer around, just a brief architecture class would be great.
We could all meet at Surly and do that. I'd, I'd be all over that. That'd be great.
Yes. I had a question about that, the Bell Museum building example that you just brought up. For example, if, if right now you said it would need alternative compliance, if that building was proposed, I guess a little bit of my worry is that it would, the people who are thinking of it, or Commissioner Baxley, please chime in if, if you think differently, you know, the architects who are working on it, build this really creative wood frame, wood building. I worry that with the regulations as they're being set, like that creativity is kind of, will, people won't think to think outside the box. Be like, oh, well, it won't get approved unless it's, you know, brick and, you know, fiber cement and yada, yada. Does that make sense? Or do you think people will design things anyway and then come to us for alternative compliance? I just don't want it to be a hindrance of like a unique projects.
Yeah, I mean, we, we meet with people very early on in the development process generally. So we, we communicate these standards to folks way before you encounter them. And that's where we can have some of these conversations around unique solutions to the ordinance. You know, the Bell Museum is a pretty special example. It's a, you know, a very well-known institutional project that, you know, was able to employ, you know, architects in the service of a, a unique and, and probably pretty expensive design solution. And so, you know, that stuff is generally going to be driven by other considerations than, you know, this material classification. And in those cases, you know, we can make exceptions to any limiting elements of the site plan review chapter. You know, we do that for projects in terms of granting variances and conditional use permits all the time when we see a solution that fits contextually within its surroundings. So, you know, part of what the site memory review chapter does and part of what zoning codes do in general is just set minimum expectations, right? It's never going to be perfect. You know, the built environment is messy. It's diverse. You know, an application of any citywide rule system is always going to have, you know, it's always going to need exceptions. And so that's why I say, think of this less as a, as a cap or a limit and more as sort of a floor, a, a basic minimum that we expect projects to meet. And that, you know, sort of keeps out the worst possible outcomes and allows for flexibility to create unique and interesting and high-quality ones.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Peter. We appreciate the work you put into this, and it was a good discussion.
Thank you for your time.
All right. I'm wondering if Kimberly's on the call or if we have any staff updates for this evening?
I am on the call, but I don't have any updates for you.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that, we have completed all of the items on the agenda for this meeting. I'll ask members and staff if there are any other matters to come before this body. All right. If not, and without objection, I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Our next committee of the whole meeting will be Thursday, August 5th, 2021. And our next planning commission meeting will be Monday, August 2nd, 2021. Thank you, everybody.